The July 13, 2020 meeting of the Menlo Park Planning Commission. With that, the first thing I will do is call to order. And I will call the order in alphabetical order. And what I would like for the commissioners to do is signal your attendance by clicking on your video camera and signaling that you're in fact alive and well and with us. So with that, in noting that Commissioner DeCarty is absent for the entire evening, I will start. Commissioner Doran.
I'm here.
Good evening, Commissioner Doran. Commissioner Cale.
I'm here.
Good evening, Commissioner Cale. Commissioner Kennedy. Now, Commissioner Kennedy had noted she was having connection problems, so we'll note her as currently not present and when and if she can join us, then we will plug her in. Proceeding to Commissioner Riggs.
Present.
Evening, Commissioner Riggs. And Commissioner Tate. Ah, good evening, Commissioner Tate. And let's record show that Commissioner Tate on or about 8:00 PM this evening is going to be signing off from the Planning Commission. And with that in mind, we will be moving the items. Instead of going in F1, F2, F3 order, we're going to be moving, what are we doing? We're moving Arnold Way up to take the place of Menlo Oaks. So it's going to be Harvard, then Menlo Oaks, then, excuse me, Harvard, then Arnold Way, then Menlo Oaks. I think it's F1, F3, F2. And I'll review that when we get to that point. Proceeding now to give a little bit of a background going into this. Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening. And I say thank you to staff, to the applicants, to the public who join us, and to my fellow commissioners. A little bit about online meetings. They, meetings in general, public hearings are difficult in the best of circumstances. When it's online, it becomes that much more difficult. The queues that you see when you're in a live forum, you can kind of track what is happening. Those are often missing in these online environments. So what I can assure you is we will review the process as we go through each item and lay it out. So there's hopefully not confusion about what's happening, when and when the time is to join in. My role in this evening's meeting is, as the chair, to be the traffic director, organizing and calling for the vote and making sure that the sequencing of who's talking when and what procedures are being followed. What I would like to emphasize is this is a public meeting. It's being transcribed and it's recorded. So for that reason, at the times of interjection or the times of speaking, please come through the chair. I'll be sure to recognize you and then go ahead and speak. And then we'll make sure we're identifying who's speaking and what the, who's coming after whom, so we can have some process to that. And normally, Mr. Tapia is the person handling logistics, but it's my understanding that Mr. Pruder will be getting us started this evening. So I will ask Mr. Pruder if he has anything to add from any guidance from mechanics or technical aspect for all of us joining us this evening. Good evening.
Good evening, Chair Barnes and fellow commissioners and members of the public. Thank you very much. Thank you for everyone joining us today as well. Regarding the communication procedures for this evening's meeting, the GoToWebinar application only supports six screens at a time. So as a clarifying point to begin the meeting, for those who are speaking or presenting, we kindly ask that you refrain from turning on your webcam and microphone until necessary. As a brief reminder for the planning commissioners, when you do have a comment or response that you would like to make, please turn on your webcam and microphone at that moment to make your comment, and the chair will then recognize you. Once you have completed your comment for discussion, you will then be asked to kindly turn off your webcam and microphone. For members of the public who are joining us this evening, you will have an opportunity to make a public comment or question, but at the time when the chair calls for public comment. There's a control panel at the right-hand side of this application. It contains a green hand icon, kind of in this format, which you can click on to notify staff that you have a public comment or question. And alternatively, there is also a questions field. It's a typing-capable function that allows you to type in a question or comment that you have, and staff will read it aloud at the appropriate time. As a reminder, the chair will have their webcam on at all times. And for those of you who are participating as applicant and/or presenter this evening, a member of the staff will activate your control panel accordingly at the right time so that you may be able to operate your presentation while you're presenting. And once again, if you do not have a speaking role during a given time, please be sure to turn off your webcam and microphone. The system can only support six video screens at a time. Just stressing that one more time. And that will be all from me. This concludes the procedural outline. Thank you very much, Chair Barnes.
Thank you. With that, we will move to reports and announcements, and I will look to Ms. Sandmeyer to, I will say good evening, and tell us if there are any reports or announcements.
Good evening, Chair Barnes and commissioners. So the City Council will be meeting tomorrow at 5:00 PM, and they'll be making a decision on the newly proposed climate action plan that the EQC put together. And as I said, that will be, that meeting will start at 5:00 PM tomorrow. I have no other reports and announcements, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Ms. Sandmeyer? Seeing none, we will proceed to public comment. And first, we'll do this in two parts. One is I will read the public comment part of the agenda, and then I'll call for Mr. Pruder to check and see if we have anyone in queue and talk any mechanics of public comment. Public comment, this is item D on this evening's agenda. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda and items listed on the consent calendar. Each speaker may address the commission once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address the political jurisdiction in which you live. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment, other than to provide general information. How this is structured is if you are with us this evening and you have a comment about something which is not on the agenda tonight, in other words, item F1, F2, F3, or the selection of chair or vice chair, now is your time to raise your virtual hand and give your public comment. If you're here specifically for one of the items this evening, then at that time, when that specific agenda item comes up, I will be calling again for public comment for each individual agenda item. And certainly, you'll have a moment to speak, should you wish to speak at that time. So with that in mind, I'm going to look to Mr. Pruder to let me know if we've got anyone in queue.
Thank you, Chair Barnes. At this moment, just taking a look, I do not see any comments or questions, but we can give it a moment if you'd like, just to see if anyone comes in with a raised hand or a question written requesting to speak.
Seeing no raised hand and confirming with Mr. Pruder that there are in fact no, you can see no other raised hands either, correct?
Yes, Chair Barnes, I can confirm that no public comments have been submitted at this time.
I'm going to proceed to close public comment, and we will move to the consent calendar. This is item E on this evening's agenda. Item E1 and item E2. Commissioner Riggs, good evening.
Good evening. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
We have a first from Riggs to approve the consent calendar as presented and submitted.
I'd like to second that motion.
We have a first from Riggs and a second from Doran to, for item E consent calendar. With that, and seeing no other comments, I will call for a vote, and I will call for this vote in alphabetical order, starting with Commissioner Doran. And when I call your name, please signal. You can just do it with an up or down with your, with your hand and verbal, if you wish to add that as well. Yes or no? So starting with Commissioner Doran.
Yes.
Commissioner Doran is a yes. Thank you. Commissioner Cale.
Yes.
Commissioner Cale is a yes. Commissioner Kennedy. Commissioner Kennedy hasn't joined us yet. Thank you. Commissioner Riggs.
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs is a yes, and Commissioner Tate. Commissioner Tate is a yes, and Barnes is a yes. So let this record show that it was a first from Riggs, a second from Doran, voting yes to approve were Barnes, Doran, Cale, Riggs, and Tate. Absent are Kennedy and DeCarty. The motion carries. Moving on to F2, the first item of this evening's public hearing. This is for a use permit at 709 Harvard Avenue. This is a request for a use permit to perform interior and exterior modifications, including the addition of a balcony to an existing non-conforming two-story, single-family residence in an existing non-conforming detached garage, which would exceed 50% of the replacement value of each of the two existing non-conforming structures in a 12-month period. The project previously received a building permit for a more limited scope of work. However, the proposed revisions plus the original scope of work would exceed 50% of the replacement value of the two existing non-conforming structures in a 12-month period, and therefore, require a use permit. The subject parcel is located on a substandard lot in the R2 low-density apartment zoning district. And with that, I will say good evening to our planner, Mr. Tapia. And in saying that, Mr. Tapia, is it accurate to say that this is your first item being brought before the Planning Commission?
Good evening, Chair and fellow commissioners, and yes, that is correct.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please tell us, are there any updates to the staff report?
There are no updates at this time, but I am available to answer any questions.
Thank you. And are there any clarifying questions related to the staff report to Mr. Tapia? Mr. Cale.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. I had two questions. One about, in the staff report, so this project exceeds a 50% replacement value, but other projects have been at 75%. Can you explain why this one is 50 and sometimes it's 75?
Yes. So it really depends on the amount of stories that the home is currently or is proposed. So if it's over, if it's two stories, then the threshold is 50%. And if it's a one-story home, then the threshold is set at 75%. And those thresholds are set according to a handout that's available on the Planning Division webpage. And you're more than welcome to refer to those as well, but in short, again, those thresholds are 75% for one-story developments and 50% for two-story developments.
Okay, great. And my second question is about the proposed balcony or sun deck and the letter from the neighbor. The neighbor's letter, it basically just says he acknowledges that the, that the deck is proposed. How do we, how do we interpret that? Is that meaning he accepts it or he doesn't have an issue with it? How are we supposed to interpret that, that letter?
If I may defer to Karina on that question.
Sure.
Yeah, so sometimes we get letters that aren't 100% clear. And I think whenever people express to us verbally what their opinion is, we say, please put it in writing, because we don't want to try to interpret what you're saying and then paraphrase it. So I think the commissioners, it's up to the commissioners how they want to interpret it or look at it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other clarifying questions? Mr. Riggs.
Yes, thank you. Question for Leo. In the report, under trees, there's a mention that there was, one of the trees that's mentioned in the arborist's report as dead was a street tree and has since been replaced by the city. Perhaps I missed when I drove by, but it looked to me that there's currently a dead tree in the planting strip that has been there for a while. Is this something that is completely remote from the project? Something that it's, is this the responsibility of the city in that case?
So my understanding is that the tree that is referred to in the plant set, the original tree that died and that was removed, that tree was removed prior to the construction going on at the site by the city, and it was replaced by two new street trees? And that's based on the recent information that I was, that I was notified by the city arborist, that there were two city street trees that were planted in that planting strip in front of the home at 709 Harvard.
And if one of those trees dies, that would be a matter for the city to replace it a second time?
I would defer to Karina on that matter, but it's my understanding that the city has some level of responsibility for trees in the right of way.
Just to add to that, it's generally the property owners who do maintain it, the trees in front of their property, and then they'll work with the city arborist if there's an issue and a tree needs to be replaced. But in this case, if there is a problem with a tree, we will definitely bring it up to the city arborist, but it's, it's not, I don't believe it's related to the project in this case.
All right, thank you. Seeing no other questions, clarifying questions to staff related to the staff report or the project, we will now move to the applicant for the project presentation. And two things I'd like to ask the applicant to do is, one, if you have an architect and the owners are two separate entities, if the owner wishes to speak, now is the time to speak in this allotted time for the presentation, both the owner and the architect. Further input from either the owner or the architect is generally limited after the presentation to questions from the commissioners regarding specific parts of the project. That can be a little bit confusing, but now is the time to speak your piece in terms of what you want us to know about your project. What I will say is, I'll lay the mental map for how we proceed through this, is first we go to the applicant for the project presentation, then I'll bring it back for fellow commissioners for any clarifying questions to the applicant. From there, I'll move to public comment, call for that, close that. I'll bring it back up to the dais for commission of discussion, and then we'll move to a motion of some kind on the project. So with that, I welcome our first project this evening and the applicant. Please introduce yourself, and we look forward to hearing about your project.
Hi, this is Lori Lyons-Williams, homeowner at 709 Harvard.
And this is Patrick Williams, the co-owner at 709 Harvard. So we wanted to take you through probably just a little bit of history on our home. We moved to Menlo Park in July of 17, and I'm actually going to, I think I'm going to have trouble controlling the advance on this slideshow. It looks like I've lost my cursor. But this is, at the very least, you can see the, the street view of the home as it was when we moved in three years ago. Very much a loved home by the previous owner and shows that love. Since we've, you know, we've moved into the home and our goal has been to fully become part of the community and have that home as our home base for our family of five. And so as we moved, as we lived in the home for about the first year, what we found was a four and two bath, while somewhat serviceable now, is not serviceable for a family with, with three kids that will too soon be teenagers. And so we actually, probably about a year into owning the house, started to have conversations with architects and contractors about what we would like to do with the home. And as it was noted in the upfront, originally pursued a plan that was more limited in scope, really focused on kitchen and bath remodel. However, as we contracted with our contractor and the demolition began in February, what he found very quickly were some things that were concerning. Now, if we could advance the slides, and we don't have to for this, this part of the conversation, what we knew already was the mechanicals, the electrical and the plumbing was grossly outdated, most of it original to the home in 1936. So we have Nava and Tube wiring throughout the house, placed in with current Romex, Romex wiring. In addition, there are parts of the home that have insulation, which is not a good idea around Romex, or around the Nava and Tube. But as our contractor began the demolition, the things he found that were especially concerning to him were water damage in the floorboards, including some rot, and then also dry rot and termite, termite damage, both in internal, internal framing and then some in the external framing. And it was really because of those that we expanded the scope of the project. On this call with us is David Tamira. He's been the architect we've used, unfortunately, sorry, David, to say it that way, but the architect we've used for about two years now, trying to bring this project across the goal line, with Leo's help specifically in the last four months. And he may be able to speak more specifically to some of the dynamics of the project.
I just saw that I was able to navigate a bit on the slideshow, so I'm just going to tick through some slides that's all advanced.
Don't think we're going to be able to get our, our slideshow to move forward for you, unfortunately. But I think you get the impression of the wiring, at the very least. The next several slides show the dry rot and then also water damage. And that's, that's the extent of our upfront. I'm not sure what, what additional comments to add as we get underway here, but happy to respond to any questions that you might have about our project.
Great. Thank you. And with that closing of your presentation, I will call for any commissioner questions, clarifying questions with regard to your presentation. Mr. Cale.
Thank you. Couple of questions. One is, the, the two dormers you're adding to the front, I see that they're centered from the street on the openings below, but I'm just curious, looking at the second floor plan, are those functional dormers?
So the dormer that is planned above the, above the door will be a skylight, and then the second dormer is planned to be decorative.
So if you're on the street and you look up through those windows, what are you, what are we going to see?
I think what you'll see is an interior wall for specifically the one, the dormer that's above the door will be glass painted, of course. You'll look through that dormer into the rear wall, and the faux dormer would be the same. I'm, I'm thinking it'd be a finished, finished wall or finished space would be the plan. It's the plan. I'm not sure if I'm understanding the question.
Well, I'm looking at the second floor plan, and it looks like, as you mentioned, these dormers, they're, the wall behind them will remain, and so they're not providing any light to the bedroom or to the closet, I guess, behind it. Is that correct?
That's how they've been drawn, yeah. The, that's for the one on the, if you're facing the house on the right side. The one on the left side, however, will drop light into the entryway.
Down, down below?
Down below, exactly. Exactly. So if you can imagine, below it will be open.
Okay.
So if you step inside the front door and looked up, you would be looking into that dormer.
Just curious, is there any way to open up the wall to bedroom four and so that, I'm just concerned you're going to stand on the street and see a blank wall through the window, and it's not going to look right.
I, I would, I, I think, you know, my wife and I just are kind of exchanging looks. I think we'd be very open to that. But I think that's a more of a technical question for David versus an owner question. I don't mean to be glib like that, but I, we would be very open to that, but I think David would need to help us understand how that gets done.
Okay, that's, you know, more of a suggestion, but I'm just concerned about what the view is for the people passing by. And my second question is about the proposed deck or sun deck. It looks directly into the neighbor's rear yard. Are you open to providing some kind of screening in one man or another, either by a higher rail or some landscaping or something?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's definitely something we'd be open to, Commissioner. I, I had heard the discussion previously that, about Paul Coletti's note, Paul is the neighbor who owns that property. And understanding what the plan included, I sought him out and his wife, walked the space with him to show where the opening would be for the sun deck. And he didn't express concerns, given that it looks into, or it overlooks, I should say, a laundry room, kind of utility area. But I would be very open to a higher railing, if that was deemed necessary or appropriate, or some kind of foliage barrier for, for privacy going both directions.
Okay, I just, one clarification from the site plan, it looks like it's, that balcony is not looking into really much of the house. It's, it's almost directly into the rear yard of the front structure.
Yeah, that's right. It is into the rear yard, and the back part of that house just happens to be the laundry room. So even the part that it's closest to is the laundry So even the part that it's closest to is the laundry room, but I think you're right. It looks more into the backyard.
Okay, thank you very much.
Uh huh.
Looking for other questions, clarifying questions from commissioners to the applicant, and seeing no additional, I will proceed now to call for public comment on this item, and I'll look to Mr. Pruder to let me know if there's public comment in queue.
Thank you, Chair Barnes, and this is a reminder for members of the public who wish to speak on this item, you have an opportunity now if you would like to raise your hand using the hand icon on the right side of the application in the control panel. You can do that at this time. I'm seeing none at the moment, and you can also use the questions and type in the question. You're welcome to do that as well as a reminder. And if you'd like, we can wait a moment. Nothing at this time.
Seeing no hands, I will look to Mr. Pruder. You agree there are no hands up?
Yes, I can confirm again, there are no comments, no questions, no hands up at this time. Thank you.
Great. So with that, I will close public comment on this item and bring it back up to the dials for Commissioner discussion. Mr. Cale?
Thank you. So it's unfortunate whenever these stop work notices go out and, and something, something went wrong and, and the project has to stop and it comes back. So I wish that wouldn't happen, but that's the case. I think the project is easy to support with two concerns. One is the, as mentioned, the dormers. I think those are a great addition to the project. There's a, there's a lot of roof there, and having these dormers centered on the openings below helps a lot. As I mentioned, I'm just concerned about what you see, so having something open behind that or some light in there or something will make a difference. And then my, my major concern is about the balcony, and I did walk back on the driveway on the house on the left, and I think that's a rental, and the only private space that front house has is this yard that the deck overlooks. And although the, the neighbor wrote a letter saying that, you know, he acknowledged that it's, it's there, that's neither an approval or a problem. I think as our, as commissioners, our job is to protect privacy whenever possible. So I'm not going to recommend a solution, but I, I would like to see the privacy protected in one way or another by the applicant to that, that private yard in the back. And I'd like to hear what other commissioners have to say as well. Thank you.
Yes, I would, I do share the concern, as we usually do on the commission, about second level views into either back of house rooms or to yards, and a little planting could go a long way, I think, to, to address that. And I'll agree with Commissioner Cale that it isn't always the current neighbor occupant, assuming they understand plans and elevations, which is awfully easy for us to assume and not always true. But a future resident may feel that that is an unfortunate situation. So at this point, I think a suggestion from the applicant would be nice to hear whether, I think perhaps something as simple as planting along the property line through the chair, if I could ask if the applicant is amenable to that?
By all means. Question to the, to the applicant related to Commissioner Riggs's question?
Absolutely. Commissioner Riggs, that's something that we have discussed with, with David, our architect. We're 100% open to that. So 100% open to some kind of greenery that will provide privacy both directions, and then even though this is small, maybe some plantings on the deck itself, which of course won't be permanent, but can also cut down sightline. So 100%, we'd be very open to that.
All right, and I'm sorry, I lost my place. Do we, do we have a first from Commissioner Cale?
We do not. We have a discussion about the project and a general query to fellow commissioners about the concerns that he raised, but not a first.
Well, then I'd like to move approval of this use permit with the condition that planting be added along the left side property line to be coordinated with and approved by the administrative staff.
With full discretion lying with staff, not coming back to commission, correct?
Correct.
So we have a first from Commissioner Riggs to approve the project per the staff report with a project-specific condition related to plantings on the left side for the purposes of privacy to be administered by staff. Commissioner Cale?
I want to make a second in a, in a moment, but I do have a quick question on the, I guess for the applicant, the owners on the left side, it notes a, a sun deck, but doesn't show if that's a solid railing or if that's an open railing or, or what that is. If I could, through the chair, ask the applicant to tell us what that is.
We, we haven't gone that far. I'm sorry, I should have waited to be, to recognize. Sorry, commissioners.
No, no, please proceed.
Okay. We haven't had that level of conversation, but if you're asking, would it be like a glass-paneled railing? I don't think that fits within the architectural style of the house. It's not something we were planning necessarily. And then also, we have children that are young enough that a sturdier railing is definitely in our best interest. So I would think it was something in, you know, whether it's a natural wood railing or wrought iron to that effect is kind of how I would think about it.
Okay, um, thank you. I guess my preference would be something more solid to help with the privacy, but I'm, I'm not going to condition that at all, so I'll just second the motion as it is presented.
Great, so we have a first from Riggs with the conditions seconded by Cale, a clean second with no other additions. Looking for any other commissioner comments? Seeing no other commissioner comments, I will proceed to take a vote on this, and it will be in alphabetical order, and I will stop. Mr. Tapia?
Yeah, Chair, if I may pose a question?
Yes, please.
Just in regardings to the conditions of approval, is there any sort of greenery that the commission has in mind? I think it was somewhat vague, at least on my end, in terms of what the commission is envisioning.
We'll go back to the maker, Mr. Riggs for, and thank you for, I forgot that, to check in with the staff about whether you understood, or clear about what the motion was. So, Mr. Riggs, could you, what is your response to Mr. Tapia's request for clarification?
If it's okay with Mr. Tapia, I would like to leave that to the proposal by the applicant to be reviewed by staff with the intent that it, in the near future, would provide screening from the applicant's balcony area to the, to the existing rear yard to the left. Is that clear enough?
Yes, if I may bring on Karina, I think there was an item that she wanted to mention regarding side property lines where the, the area between the home and the property line is extremely narrow.
Yeah, if I could just add through the chair, we've had some conversation with the city arborist about narrow spaces, it can be a problem to plant a tree, because as it grows, it can impact the house with the roots and all that. I think maybe some kind of tall shrub might work better, but it may also, I mean, we can look at kind of a combination, if that's okay with the commission, of a taller railing and maybe some greenery that will at least block some of the view.
Commissioner, I'll go to you in a moment. Commissioner Cale, Commissioner Riggs, are you, do you have any further thought on that?
Yes, I, I avoided, well, I meant to avoid using the word tree. It would be planting. Something that, there is a vine that grows on fences and walls that will grow seemingly to 10 feet within, I'm going to say, five to six years, and that would be gruia, and it's a, it forms some pretty sturdy woody stems. It can be trimmed to be flat. It is evergreen. It happens to have purple flowers, if that's suitable. So I think that is a possible example, and at least to my limited knowledge, which is observing such a plant through roughly age 10, its roots aren't anything like a tree that can potentially lift structures. I'm all too aware of that. There are also trees that, I'm not sure if the city of Menlo Park has such a list, but I know the city of Palo Alto does, trees sometimes referred to as patio trees, which have less aggressive and less extensive roots. That might be an option as well. Not all trees are as aggressive as, you know, liquid amber or privet and trees like that.
Thank you. Commissioner Cale?
Thank you. I'm not a plant guy, but I will toss out two recommendations. One is pittusporum, and another is bamboo. They both have their problems, but in a small space, it can work well. Thank you.
So, Mr. Tapia, we have some further clarifications by the maker, some examples by the maker with further examples from the seconder. Do you believe you have the direction that you need to work with the applicant to achieve the condition?
Yes, yes, I do, Chair, and thank you, fellow commissioners.
So with that, look for any other, we've got clarification from staff, staff, and then we've got a first and a second. I'm looking for any other comments or other, anything else from fellow commissioners. Seeing none, I will proceed now to call for a vote on this first item we have this evening, and I will call it, as is customary, in alphabetical order, and I'm going to start with this F1 item with Commissioner Doran, and please indicate your yes or no vote. Commissioner Doran with a smile is a yes. Commissioner Cale?
Yes.
Commissioner Cale is a yes. Kennedy is recused, so we'll move to Riggs. Commissioner Riggs is a yes. And Commissioner Tate?
Sorry, my camera.
That's, yep, there we go. So Commissioner Tate is a yes, and Barnes is a yes. So with that, we have voting to approve the project with the condition is Barnes, Doran, Cale, Riggs, Tate. Absent is DeCarty, recused is Kennedy. And with that, the project is approved. Congratulations. Thank you for coming this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, some housekeeping now, and I'll check in with Commissioner Tate. Commissioner Tate, we are certainly amenable to moving F3, which was Arnold Way, to the second position and moving Menlo Axe to the third position on tonight's agenda, you having a stop at 8:00. If we proceed with Arnold with F3 as our second item to try to get you in, I suspect it's going to certainly bleed over past 8:00. How would you like to do this?
Let's see, so we're looking at probably another 40, 40, 50 minute discussion. I can't. Is Kennedy joining?
Kennedy will join for this item, yes, for the next tip, Kennedy will join.
I may comment through the chair. I'm not sure if Commissioner Kennedy has been able to call in. I know she's had internet issues, so if both Commissioners Kennedy and Tate are out, then we would not have a quorum for that one due to a recusal.
So with that in mind, I know Kennedy wanted to be alerted for when the, the issue that we just completed was over. So were you able to send that out, Ms. Anmar?
I did send her an email. I don't know if she was able to receive that with her internet issues.
If she's not able to join, I'll, I'll stay so that the item doesn't get continued.
And if she does join, you'll drop off, is that correct, Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay, so with that understanding, we will, and thank you for that, Ms. Anmar, we will commence with F3 on the agenda and have that be our second item, and we will proceed until Kennedy joins, and at the point that Kennedy joins, Commissioner Tate will drop off so we can continue our quorum after Commissioner Tate drops off.
So I may add something through the chair.
Yes, please.
I don't think switching off would work, because the, if Commissioner Kennedy joins in the middle, she wouldn't be able to vote on it. So we need, we need four commissioners who are on the whole time to have the quorum.
So door number one, we'll just...
Okay, let's get started.
So with that, Commissioner Tate, you will be with us through this entire item. And with that, we will proceed to item, the second item on this evening's agenda, which is item F3. This is a use permit. This is for 795 Arnold Way. This is a request for use permit to construct first and second story additions to an existing one-story, single-family residence on a substandard lot with regard to lot area and width in the R1U, single-family urban residential zone in the district. The addition would be greater than 50% of the existing floor area and is considered equivalent to a new structure. The applicant is also requesting to maintain a fence greater than seven feet in height along a portion of the right property line. And with that, I will say goodbye. And with that, I will say good evening to Mr. Pruder, who is the staff for this item. Good evening.
Good evening Chair Barnes again, and good evening commissioners. This project, we have no updates at this time, but I am available answering questions that you have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any clarified questions to Mr. Pruder with regards to staff report? Seeing none, we will proceed now to the applicant to tell us about their project, and a note to the applicant, if the applicant, oftentimes there's an architect and there's an owner, if now is the time that the owner wishes to speak, both the applicant and architect should take this presentation time to both present or speak on behalf of the project. With that, good evening, and we look forward to hearing about your project.
Good evening, my name is Joel Knudsen.
And I'm Michelle Heisman.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here, and thank you especially to Commissioner Tate for your flexibility, we really do appreciate it. Michelle first bought this property in 2008, and we feel very fortunate to be property owners and residents of Menlo Park. We're raising three children in a little over 900 square feet, as they get older, it's becoming a little bit tight, so the purpose of this project is really to expand our living space, that we have an opportunity to raise our kids throughout their childhood and to have this be our home for as long as we can.
And I would add that we worked, we chose to work with Fred Bloom, who lives in the Willows neighborhood, in part to make sure the extension fit in with the neighborhood feel of the Willows, we also paid very close attention to maintaining a really beautiful yard, landscaping is something that's very important to us, a huge gardener, and we really believe that we've been able to leverage additional space, plus keeping a yard for our children and for the neighborhood. And Fred Bloom is also on the call, in case he would like to add anything about his approach to this addition.
I'm Fred Bloom, Chairman Commissioners, I'm here to answer any questions as they come up. I really don't have a whole lot to add right now, I think Matt did a very good job of kind of outlining the project for us.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions to the applicant as it relates to the presentation and the project? Seeing no commissioner comments, I will now proceed to move to public comment for this item. And I'll look to Mr. Tapia to confirm if anyone is in queue.
Thank you Chair Barnes, I am not seeing any comments or questions at this moment, but we can give it a second if you would like.
I do not see any additional hands as well, and if you will just double confirm that, I will proceed to close public comment.
That is correct Chair, there are no public comments at this time.
Thank you. So with that, I will close public comments and bring it back up to the dais for commissioner discussion. Commissioner Riggs.
About the only thing I have to say is that this appears to me to be a handsome, sympathetic project that fits nicely into the neighborhood. And I would find this easy to approve as it's presented.
Thank you.
I guess if there are no other comments, would the Chair like to entertain a motion?
The Chair would be happy to take a motion and then reach back out for any other commissioner comments.
Then I will move to approve the use permit per the staff report.
We have a first from Riggs to approve the project per the staff report. Commissioner Doran. I am an amateur lip reader, and that looked like I seconded that motion, so we have a first from Riggs, a second from Doran to approve this project per staff report. Looking for any other commissioner comments before I proceed to call for a vote. Seeing none, I will proceed to call for a vote on this item in alphabetical order. And we have a first from Riggs on this item, and we have a second from Doran, we have DeCarty as absent, and let me check on this, so Commissioner, I'm sorry, I was remiss in announcing the recusal of Commissioner Cale from this project due to a conflict on it. So let the record show that Cale is recused, DeCarty is absent, Kennedy is absent, and we have a first from Riggs and a second from Doran. I will call for Kennedy, actually she wasn't here at the outset, so I won't call for her either. So with that, I'll proceed to call for the vote on this by starting with Commissioner Doran. Commissioner Doran is a yes, your mic, by the way, is not functioning, Commissioner Doran?
It's functioning now.
Yes, I can hear you now.
You read my lips correctly, and I am a yes.
So we have a yes from Doran, Cale recused, Kennedy absent, Commissioner Riggs. Commissioner Riggs is a thumbs up, Commissioner Tate. Commissioner Tate is a thumbs up, and Barnes is a yes, so let the record show voting to approve the project, Barnes, Doran, Riggs, and Tate, absent, Kennedy, DeCarty, recused Cale, congratulations. The project is approved. So with that, I will check back in with Commissioner Tate. Commissioner Tate, you are now going to be leaving the meeting, is that correct? Oh wait, let me check on Ms. Anmar, so if Commissioner Tate leaves and we have no Kennedy, we've got Barnes, Doran, okay, Cale comes back in, excuse me, so Cale comes back in and Tate goes out, which means we still have a quorum.
Yes, and Chair Barnes, I would recommend that you just ensure Commissioner Cale is here, calling his name, so we can confirm we have a quorum.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so you still have a quorum if I leave now?
That is correct, at 8:03 Commissioner Tate will be, is okay to leave us, and we have just seen Commissioner Cale give us a thumbs up that he is in attendance, thank you for that Ms. Anmar, thank you Ms. Tate. So let the record show that currently in attendance, we have Barnes, Doran, Cale, Riggs. And that is four individuals, which gives us a quorum. Okay, that takes us to the last item on this evening's agenda, and this is item F2, which is a use permit for 1051 Menlo Oaks Drive. This is a request for a use permit to demolish an existing one-story, single-family residence in detached accessory buildings and construct a new two-story, single-family residence with an attached garage on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width in the R1U, Single Family Urban Residential Zoning District. And with that, I see that the project planner is Ms. Khan, good evening Ms. Khan.
Good evening Chair and Commissioners. I would like to make an update in regards to the staff report, particularly the location of the subject property. In the staff report, it mentions that it is to the east of Menlo Oaks Drive, however, it should be to the west of Menlo Oaks Drive. That is the only clarifying comment that I have, but I'm available to take any comments.
Thank you. Any questions regarding the staff report for Ms. Khan? Seeing none, I will proceed now to invite the applicant to tell us about their project, and as is customary, now is the time for both the applicant, who can be bifurcated between the owner and the architect, to speak, tell us about your project. What we'll do is we'll have a project presentation, I'll come, I'll call for fellow commissioners to have any clarifying questions. After that, I will take it to public comment, then after that, bring it back to the dais for further discussion, I'm with commissioners, and then we'll call for a motion. So with that, good evening, thank you for joining us this evening, and first, why to introduce yourself, and secondly, please tell us about your project.
Yeah, good evening, this is Sai.
This is Izam.
So we are the owners of the property 1051 Menlo Oaks Drive. We just want to say that we love the neighborhood and we would like to build our dream house there. With that, we are handed over to our architect, Yingxi. Thank you.
Hi, good evening everyone, thank you for taking the time reviewing our project. My name is Yingxi Chen, I'm the product architect for this project, and I will just give you a quick introduction about our design. So at the very beginning of this project, the young couple told me that they love Menlo Park and would like to have their nine-month-old daughter to grow in such a nice community. So to have a house that can meet long-term growth needs of the family, they would like to demolish the existing two-bedroom, one-bath residence and build a new two-story house in a modern farmhouse style. This four-bedroom, three-and-a-half-bath home would total 2798 square foot. The lot is a substandard lot in width, and the minimum width is 15 feet. So to make the space more functional and efficient on the first floor, we propose to have large open space on the left while leaving the smaller enclosed garage and guest room to the right. On the second floor, all three bedrooms have south-facing windows, which are the most desired orientation for heating performance. The proposed second floor is offset from the first floor to reduce the mass. The project is basically board and battened fiber cement siding. And during the design, the owners have shared have shared floor plans and elevations with the two adjacent neighbors and are willing to accommodate all their neighbors' requests at their best. Our objective is to limit the amount of impact to the neighbors, so considering privacy to both the owners and their neighbors, we minimized glazing areas on both sides at the second floor, and most of the windows sill heights are above five foot. The left-side neighbor worried that the proposed living room window would overlook her bedroom, and to relieve her concern, we lowered the finished floor by six inches compared to the existing. Meanwhile, we also proposed to add one-foot-tall lattice fence topper above the existing six-foot-tall fence at that portion, and tree protection fence will also be placed during the construction. So that's it, I'm open to any question or concerns.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant from fellow commissioners? Mr. Cale.
Thank you, I have a couple of questions for you, one is on the left side, the, you have set back the second-floor walls, which help a lot with the privacy next door, but at the rear bedroom, I think it's the master bedroom, has two tall windows with sills at three feet. Would you be open to reducing those windows to match the front bedroom and then putting your egress window at the back, either in the bay or maybe not having the bay?
Yes, you can see those are, be used as egress window on the side, so, let's see. I think we, well, we could raise the sill height a little bit, like just to match the front as you suggested, if that works. Or for you, raise it from three foot to three foots four. And it's actually the owners' preference to have the bay window at the back, so that they can sit there and read a book and also have the picture window there, instead of have any frame at the window so that they can look over the backyard.
I would say anything can help, anything you could do to help with the privacy would be great, and again, you are fairly far away from other projects we've seen, so that would be good. I'll just note that, you know, the modern farmhouse is a simple style, so it often does not have any bay windows, so if that bay went away, I would be, I would be okay with that. The second question, so I have a little concern about the proportions of the house. The garage, even though it's a one-car, is prominent, and you have 10-foot ceilings and nine-foot ceilings, which make it rather tall. It does generally work, however, that porch roof, it seems to be just really tall and out of proportion. By my estimation, the ceiling of that porch is 11 or 12 feet off the ground, and the current one is, you know, maybe eight or nine feet, so just looking at the street scape view, it seems just rather tall, and I I guess my only thought is, is one easy way to fix this is drop down not only the porch roof, but the roof over the garage, because there's a lot of wall above the garage door, and I think that would help with the overall massing of the house. Are you, have you considered that at all, are you interested in looking at that?
Let me see, from a three-dimensional at that portion. Well, actually, if you see the roof plan, the roof above the porch is continuous to the back, connecting the kitchen and living room, so yeah, maybe we can think about different roof shape at the front, maybe somehow break the one roof to two and lower the front portion. one roof to two and lower the front portion, drop it from 11 to 10 as you suggested.
I didn't suggest a height, but a foot would be, would be great. I appreciate how the hip comes off the corner of the second-floor bedroom. That's always a nice way to do it. But still, I think that, that roof is, is so tall and so far off the ground, it just seems like it needs to be, needs to be pulled down. And so that's my question is if you were open to that?
Yeah, we are open to that. And right now, I can, yeah, you're right. It's, it's 11 foot from the, from the patio. So.
So 12 feet off the grade or so?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And my last question is about the windows. I noticed they're vinyl, the windows, the material is vinyl and they're sliders. So they're, you know, on the cheaper side of the, the types of windows you can get. The modern farmhouse style is already, makes great use of inexpensive materials with the board and batten. So I would just make a suggestion or request that you upgrade those windows to a wood window. I think the neighborhood supports that type of product. So I'm just, my question is, would you, are you interested in upgrading all the windows to wood windows from vinyl?
I need to talk to the owners about it because they do have budget concern. We were thinking about it, but like fiberglass or vinyl and then they said maybe vinyl for now because of the budget issue.
Okay. Well, that would, that answers my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking for any other questions to the applicant on this project prior to going to public comment? Seeing other questions, I'll proceed now to calling for public comment. And let me check in with Mr. Tapia to see if he sees anyone in queue.
Thank you Chair Barnes. Just as a reminder, for those who are virtually attending tonight's meeting, there is a green hand icon on your screen, which you could click on and that'll notify a member of staff that you have a comment or question that you would like to share. Alternatively, there is a question field in your control panel where you can submit a written question and a member of staff can then read that question or comment aloud. And at this moment, Chair Barnes, I am not seeing any comments or questions.
I do not see any as well and double-checking back to you before I close public comment, you do not see any new ones, correct, Mr. Tapia?
That is correct. Chair Barnes, there are no public comments at this time.
So with that, I will close public comment and bring it back to the DIAS for commissioner discussion. Mr. Kale?
Thank you. So the, the project is definitely easy to support regarding the neighbors' concerns. I do appreciate that the second-floor wall is, is so far back from the property line and that some effort will be made to protect the tree. So I don't quite share the concerns of the blocking sunlight. So I would make a motion to approve the project as proposed with the condition that the front porch roof and garage are lowered a foot and that the master bedroom side windows on the left side are raised up, the sills are raised up to provide more privacy to the neighbor. Is that clear?
And for the purposes of clarification, either you could do it, Mr. Kale, or the architect could. If someone could pull up the plan and with a cursor visually show those two parts, so we can see exactly what it is that we're working with. Mr. Tapia, how can you assist in this? Could you give, could you bring up the representative slide at the direction of Mr. Kale and then give mouse control to Mr. Kale? So he could use his cursor to show us specifically the places on the elevation?
Yes, Chair Barnes. I will look to Von, one fellow staff member who is responsible for displaying items on the screen. She can go ahead and handle that.
Through the chair, I'm looking at sheet A3, the top two elevations.
A3.
Can you tell me how I have the control of the cursor?
Give me a second. Let me try to pull it because my computer is a little bit slow today. So hold one second.
Mr. Chairman? How do I have control of the mouse?
I will give you control of the mouse and keyboard. Give me one second.
Okay.
Von is on it, alright.
Alright, so you say A3?
That's correct.
You now have control of the mouse and keyboard. It's all yours.
Great, okay. So on the front elevation, I'm looking at the roof over the garage. Although I see a problem now, if you're lowering that roof, it's gonna hit the front door. So that's gonna be a problem to start with. But this roof over here is just really high above grade and it would be nice to drop that a foot. There will be an issue of how resolve that here at the, at the hip as it turns the corner. But something, something I'd say needs to be done about the mass of this. And then my other condition is to raise the sill of these two windows here on the left side at the back. It was proposed to raise them four inches in order, I believe it was four inches, in order to help with privacy. So those are my, those are the two conditions I'm making a motion with.
I see. And a point of clarification, so on the front, starting with the hip over the porch area, is it the plate height that goes down as well or is it simply the height of the roof from the plate height up?
The columns will need to be shorter and that would, that may, that will probably affect the plate height here at this front wall.
And where the top of the roof line is, the ridge, the porch roof associated with the porch area, that in effect drops and you're, what we're talking about is dropping that a foot. Is that correct?
Correct. The line where the porch roof meets the second-floor wall, just below that window, you will see one more foot of wall below that window.
I see. And that's how to drop is at the discretion of the, of the applicant?
That's correct.
And then if you would go back to the gable over the garage door, is it still to drop that a foot as well from the peak of the gable?
I'm gonna remove that condition because it's going to affect the front door as soon as that eve right over the entry door, which I assume returns all the way back to the front wall. That's gonna be a problem. So I'm gonna leave the garage. It's a single-car garage. It's not that massive. Even though it is prominent, I'm just gonna leave it alone.
Okay, got it. And then, I'm sorry, on the, the windows on the elevation, those, the sill height raises what, one foot as we said as well?
I'll double-check, but I think we only have four inches or so before we're meeting the maximum sill height for egress windows.
Okay, so to extend it to the maximum, which may or may not be in the four, four-inch range, correct?
Correct. The maximum sill height is three feet, eight inches or 44 inches. But that's clear, so the window frame gets in the way. So whatever, working with the standard sizes, whatever the, the most we can reduce those windows would be appropriate.
Okay. And so I'll take this time to check in with the applicant for an understanding of what's being asked, not necessarily a response, but an understanding of what's being asked, what's being proposed?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then I'll move to, you have, can you render an opinion as to whether that is generally doable for this project? In your opinion?
Yeah, I believe so. The two windows at the master bedroom raise the sill height by four, by four inches. It is, it's a, it's a quick and easy change. And the porch, the roof line, I think, yeah, if, if you just see it from the street, we can drop it one foot and around the corner, I can't, I think it's doable.
With that, I will call for any other, so we have a first, excuse me, from Kale with the two conditions as laid out. So two things, I'll call for, working for a second, and I'm calling for any other commissioner comments as well. Mr. Riggs?
Yes, I am, I follow and I sympathize with the comments from my fellow commissioner. I am concerned, however, that directing a change in height for a wraparound roof, the height of which is most, matters most for the interior space, not for the porch, will lead to complications for the architect and for the building. The way this is normally resolved in ranch-style architecture is that the ridge on the hip is moved back away from the corner of the second floor. And the result is that the forward-facing roof has a different low point. But if I saw that presented on a farmhouse style, I would be making the comment that this isn't consistent with farmhouse and is there a way that we could fix that? I'm also concerned that adjusting that roof could lead to complications with the garage roof as the as the hip is currently centered on a window. And therefore, the break or ridge line at the right side of that, the front roof under construction is somewhat fixed. Without a fixed location, but lower, it potentially no longer intersects the ridge line of the garage roof, which would throw this into imbalance. I don't know that all of this will happen, but I certainly suspect it. I would like to propose an alternative solution to Mr. Kale's valid observation, which would be to raise the garage door, that is, make it rather than a seven-foot garage door, make it an eight-foot-tall garage door. But that's a minor item in ordering the door. I think that would be a better proportion in any case. And then frankly, introducing front planting along the, or foundation planting at the building, particularly in front of the porch. I couldn't readily see whether any lawn was indicated here, but that is no longer common in new projects. And I think this landscaping could within a couple of years mask the the dimension between the front first-floor window sills and grade. I think that would have the same effect as, as lowering the roof in that it would reduce the proportion visible of the first floor. So I don't know if the maker would entertain those, that as an alternative. But I have to say I would be more comfortable with that than trying to direct the relatively significant portion of the design that is the roof over the first floor.
Looking to, so we're leaving that, Mr. Riggs, as currently general observations as it relates to the project. We have a first from Mr. Kale, so I'll look to Mr. Kale at the suggestion of Mr. Riggs, whether there's anything in what he was saying that would modify your motion as currently presented.
I appreciate the comments. The, the idea to go with a taller garage door would help a lot. So that would be a great solution. I still feel the, the issue with the porch roof is that it's too tall above grade. So it's hard not to, you know, throw more suggestions out here. But perhaps this lower wraparound roof can drop and continue on the left. I don't, I lost my cursor, but continue on the left side until it meets the first-floor wall between the living room and the kitchen and then have an offset there. Oh, thank you. So perhaps this, this lower roof here can drop and then continue to come off this corner on the second floor, but come back to a point where the rooms change below and then have a, an offset here or a rake or something to make that work. So I think it looks better from the front and the front room on the first floor, the ceiling height will be affected. But I think the overall look, in my opinion, is better. So that would be my alternate suggestion to the alternate suggestion. So let me amend my motion then, again, if I can. So the, the garage door will be a foot taller, eight-foot-tall garage roll-up door. The lower roof over the entry and on the The lower roof over the entry and on the side over the living room will drop a foot. And then the two master bedroom windows will also be raised up as much as possible to meet egress. That's my amended motion. Does that, does that make sense, Mr. Chairman?
It does. It's a three-part. God, I'm just taking a note here.
Okay.
Okay, so as it currently stands, we have a first from Kale with the three points as stated by Mr. Kale. That's a live motion, and looking for additional comments for a second. Mr. Riggs?
Through the chair, I'm wondering if we could ask the architect, and this is sort of putting one on the spot for a quick analysis, but would this lowering of the porch roof and around maybe halfway down the left side make for significant difficulties with the garage roof?
No, I just tried. It worked. It works.
All right, thank you.
So with that, and with the level of comfort that I have with the suggestions, excuse me, with the motion put forward by Mr. Kale and the three points, and having a level of comfort from the architect that these are manageable, I will second the motion from Mr. Kale. Looking for any additional comments, and absent any additional comments, or looking for any additional comments, and then from there, given that there's first and a second, first by Kale, second by Barnes, we'll call for a vote per the motion. And let me check in with staff before I call this motion for a vote, to see if there's any clarifications, so we don't have to go back and relitigate it. Are you, Ms. Conkleer, on Mr. Kale's three points? Is there any clarifications that are needed?
No, I do understand the three points.
Great. So again, first from Kale, second from Barnes. I'll call for a vote. It'll be an alphabetical. We have in attendance Barnes, Doran, Kale, and Riggs. So I will proceed to call for votes, starting with Mr. Doran.
That's a yes.
That's a yes. We have a yes from Mr. Doran, Mr. Kale.
Yes.
Mr. Kale is a yes. Mr. Riggs?
That's a yes.
Riggs is a yes. I will vote. Barnes is a yes. Let the record show that Barnes, Doran, Kale, Riggs vote in the affirmative. DeCarty is absent, Kennedy is absent, Tate is absent. The motion, the project is approved per the conditions this evening. Congratulations. Thanks for coming this evening. We appreciate your time.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that, and my fellow commissioners, wraps our public hearing portion of tonight's meeting, which takes us into G, which is regular business. And this G1 is a selection of planning commission chair and vice chair for July 2020 through April 21. And I will look to Ms. Sandmeyer to kind of give some structure to how this, how this all works. Good evening, Ms. Sandmeyer.
Good evening again, Chair Barnes and Commissioners. So this is an opportunity for the commission to select a chair and vice chair through the next year when the city council makes new appointments, and that would likely be in April 2021. And the chair and vice chair should be separate motions. That's all I have to add, but...
I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just gonna say, that's all I have to add, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Is it customary to do chair or vice chair first? What have you seen in the past?
I think in the past, the chair was chosen first.
Okay, so, and then, so with that, I'll call for chair first and then vice chair. Now, in terms of the nominating process, is it a function of a commissioner nominating an individual, and does that individual need a second, and then we call for a vote? Is that the process?
Yeah, so there could be a couple nominations for chair or vice chair, but it's basically, there can be conversation about it, but it goes kind of the same way as projects. So you have a first and a second, and then that is voted on.
Okay, so we could have a first, and if there is no second, we keep looking for, and we'll, along the way, obviously, I'll ask for... Well, there's a first, and if the first is followed by a second, then I'll ask for additional folks, or should I round up the first first? How do I make sure I don't preclude someone from getting a nomination being elevated when customarily, if there's a first and a second, we go to a vote?
Yeah, I think it's fine just to kind of generally ask for nominations, and then maybe when everyone's made their nominations that they would like to make, then you as chair could ask for a second, or if there's seconds. I think it doesn't have to be very specific. It's just, you know, there can be discussion, and then a motion, and then a vote.
Okay, good. And I think the respectful way is to finish calling for firsts, and then double back on seconds, to make sure everyone is acknowledged. So with that, I am opening up the floor for, this is for the chair in looking for firsts. Commissioner Doran?
I would like to nominate Chairman Barnes to serve another year, if we can convince him to do that. I really admire the way you run these meetings over the past year.
I appreciate that. I did not see that coming. Thank you for that. Thank you. Looking for any other firsts for chair? Well, as is customary, the vice chair is elevated to chair. So I want to respect precedent, and I will nominate Mr. Riggs for chairman. So we have, we have a Barnes nomination and a Riggs nomination. Commissioner Doran?
I wasn't aware of that precedent, so I will withdraw my nomination.
Thank you. And I, by no means was it meant to be disrespectful. It's, I appreciate the nomination. Thank you, Commissioner Doran. So we have a withdrawal of Barnes, and we have a nomination of Riggs as the chair. And we need a second, I either need another first for another individual, or I need a second so that we can proceed to make a vote. And given that there's only the four of us on this call, we need to hear from either Doran or Kale for another first or a second. Commissioner Doran?
Well, second nomination.
And there we have it. We have Riggs as a first, excuse me, we have Barnes as a first, Doran as a second. Looking for any other comments? Seeing no other comments, proceed to take a vote on the election of chair for the next term for chairman of the planning commission. I'll take an alphabetical roll call, and the roll call will start. Just to review, the four of us that are on is Barnes, Doran, Kale, and Riggs. And I'll start with Commissioner Doran as to the motion to elevate Riggs to chair. First by Barnes, second by Doran. Commissioner Doran, what say you?
Surprisingly, I'm a yes.
Doran is a yes. We'll go to the subject individual. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Mr. Kale?
Yes.
Mr. Kale is a yes. Mr. Riggs?
I guess yes.
And then Barnes is a yes, which makes it unanimous. The planning commission votes to elevate Riggs to chair for this coming year. Congratulations. Which now takes us to, Mr. Riggs, do you have a, an acceptance speech that you would like to give at this point in time?
No, I may make a comment in a moment, but if I may ask Ms. Sandmeyer, at this point, is there a new chair, and so who would lead the selection for the vice chair?
We can't hear you.
Okay, apologize. I have to be on my phone, and I have to mute it, so. But anyway, I believe Chair Barnes will be chair for the rest of the meeting, and then our next meeting, July 27. You will, so from vice chair Riggs to chair Riggs.
Thank you. The power grab by Commissioner Riggs notwithstanding, we are going to proceed to vice chair. And, Mr. Riggs?
I have to stop laughing first. I'm sorry. I would like to make a nomination for vice chair. And that would be Commissioner Doran. And may I, as long as I have the moment, to say that I might have felt slightly underappreciated, except earlier this evening, except that I too had considered whether it would be awfully convenient for Mr. Barnes to be shanghaied into another year of service. And I also want to express my appreciation for your management of our new format. So again, I'd like to nominate Mr. Doran.
Thank you. We have a first, excuse me, yes, we have a, for vice chair, we have a first from Riggs for Doran. I will make a second for Mr. Doran. I appreciate his consistency. There is an adage that 90% of whatever you do is showing up. But Mr. Doran not only shows up with consistency, he also shows up with quality as well. So for that reason, I will second the, actually, I'm sorry. Let me take that back. I said I wasn't gonna ask for seconds before finding any other firsts. So I'll take back my second, and let me go out and look for any other firsts for vice chair. So I apologize for that. That was out of order. Okay, so any other firsts, are there firsts for vice chair nominations? Seeing no other nominations, proceed to close the nominations. And I'll go back to my original comment. I heartily endorse Commissioner Doran for vice chair. And with that, I'll call for, and if there's any other comments, please, before I take the actual vote, please plug in now. Seeing no other comments, no other hands raised, I'll move now to call for a vote for Commissioner Doran as vice chair for this coming year. And it'll also be alphabetical, starting with the subject individual himself, Mr. Doran.
Well, I'm surprised to get the nod in spite of my attempted coup at Commissioner Riggs' expense, so I'm honored.
Mr. Doran? Self-votes, if that's a word, for himself. Mr. Kale?
Yes.
Kale is a yes. So we have a yes from Doran, yes from Kale. Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Mr. Riggs is a yes, and Barnes is a yes. So let the record show that it's Barnes, Doran, Kale, and Riggs, all voting to elect as vice chair, Mr. Doran, for this coming year. And that concludes our voting as it relates to chair and vice chair for this year. So that takes us to informational items. And this, I'll look back to Ms. Sandmeyer for any informational items that we need to hear about.
Yeah, so the next meeting will be July 27, and we have two single-family homes on that agenda. That is it for the reports, but I would like to thank you, Chair Barnes, for your service during this time, and especially as we transition to the online meetings. And I'd also like to thank Vice Chair Riggs for his service during the past year and several months. So that concludes my announcements, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Sandmeyer related to the informational items? Great. And in closing, I will say that it has been a real pleasure. I've had a ball being chair. And I look forward to being just a regular guy. being chair, and I look forward to being just a regular guy on our next meeting. So thank you, everyone, for coming this evening, and we will see you all at the next planning commission meeting. This meeting is adjourned at 8:53 PM this evening. Thank you.